All right, good afternoon. I call to order this regular meeting of the Caravelle Community Redevelopment Agency. It's July 18th, 2023 at 1:30 p.m., and we're conducting this meeting in the Caravelle City Hall Chambers. Thank everyone for silencing your phones. And we'll start out with Commissioner Melander who will lead us in a prayer, and then I will lead the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Please stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you again for another wonderful day. Thank you for allowing us to all come and be here together and conduct our business in a healthy manner. And we continue to ask for your special guidance as we go through our meeting here. And I'd also like to add, we have members of the city staff that are out of sick. We have members in the community that are out of sick and have this terrible virus. And I ask that you put your hands upon them and give them the graces and help them move through this process and feel a little bit better. In your name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Keisha, if you would please do the roll call.
Chase Chizum.
Here.
Mr. Walden.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mayor DePard.
Here.
Mr. Melander.
Here.
Mr. Gray.
Here.
And Mr. Brown.
Here.
All right, next on the agenda is approval of the June 20th, 2023 CRA regular meeting minutes. I hope everyone had the opportunity to review, and someone's ready to entertain a motion.
No motion to approve.
Okay. Do we have a second?
All second.
All right, Ms. Keisha, that motion is by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Ms. Chizum. Is there any discussion? Any further discussion? Those in favor?
No.
Any opposed? And that one carries. Next on the agenda, we have public comment. And is there anyone in the audience? We have two attendees today. Would anyone like to speak under public comment? Any public comment? Okay, then we'll move on to staff reports, and we have our CRA director, Ms. Courtney Dipsy.
All right, back to business. It's time to do the budget, so we usually have a budget meeting before we have a, bring it to the CRA. Our next meeting's going to be on the 15th. We can do it that morning and have the meeting that afternoon, or we can have it another day before. Do you have any dates in mind?
I'll just say right off, go ahead and break the ice, the 15th is good for me. I believe we did it that way last year in the morning, the workshop and then...
We did. I think it's because everybody's already scheduled for, to come in that afternoon, so then most people...
Yeah, me too.
And I think if we had a question, you know, with the budget, then we could take it up some more at the meeting in the afternoon if there was some question. If we're pleased with it, we could even go ahead and recommend it that afternoon to the, to the commission for their approval. So if not, we can take it up again in, let's see, August, September? Hate to take it that late, but anyway.
10:30? It's going to be Tuesday, the 15th at 10:30?
Is that okay?
Do you need a motion?
Yes, we do.
I'll make a motion to schedule a CRA budget workshop for 10:30 on Tuesday, August 15th.
Okay. And then, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. And so that motion for the workshop on, on August 15th at 10:30 is Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Melander. Is there any discussion? I just want to remind you all that this is a good time to be thinking about what projects you would like to see. We think probably our revenues would probably be about the same as they were this year, maybe a little more because Ms. Keisha says the property values went up. So that'd kind of give you an idea. So be thinking about some project proposals to bring, or talk to Courtney, you know, about some things that maybe need to be done, or, you know, just bring your ideas. Okay. Is that all right with everyone?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you.
On our facade grants, 201 Northwest 11th Street and 403 Northwest 11th Street have both been closed out and completed. 201 Marine Street, he is still working on that. See, he's made some progress there. 102 East Meridian, he reports that he should be finished with his project the first week of office. And he says that he is still on that schedule. Clock tower repairs and upgrades have been, they're not scheduled because they don't know when they're coming, but they have been requested, so when they get on their rotation to come back to this area, they'll, they'll do those. The tree removal at the north side of the post office, he's still working, he's just waiting on the contractors at the Family Dollar. Keisha spoke with him this morning. It's just because of the rain and the accessibility getting in there. Whenever they're ready for him to get in there, he'll get in there and do that. The painting for the stripes on Marine Street Boat Ranch, they've already sent out a notice to proceed for that. Paint on Marine Street Pavilion Restaurant, they've already painted the inside of the building. They've been down there doing some pressure washing, so they'll be doing some painting on the outside and the fish cleaning station. And then tomorrow, I do have a meeting with Duke Energy for a site visit for our charging stations at the fire department. So that one's been a long time, but they said once they get the site visited, I'll move quickly after this.
That's good.
And that's my report.
Okay. And, you know, many years ago, when I first met Charlie Painter, he, he suggested to have a charging station. It was brought up somewhere either this, I think in a, on a commission, and it took all this long time.
It's been years.
Things take time. I, I have a couple of things, if y'all don't mind. The palm trees in front of the flower shop there, they are like, you can't see the flower shop. And I, I asked Ms. Gina about it. I thought maybe she wanted them for shade or something because the sun comes up down that B Avenue. She would like them cut, but I told her we had planned to have them cut the end of July. I don't know if they're on the list.
They are on the list. We did add those in, but if she wants them trimmed up, I mean, I can have that sitting in the trim.
Okay, whatever. I mean, she, she did, I did tell her that I would make sure they would be trimmed the end of July, so, but if they want to take off a few limbs, they can do that too.
They weren't counting the number.
And then over in front of Southeast Avenue C, you know, I had requested to clean up in front of the water plant, and that looks real good. And across the street, there was a ton of vodka bottles, and that got cleaned up. But I saw the property owner there, that his driveway comes out on Avenue C, and we talked about it. He said that he gets a dump of vodka bottles there like twice a week, those little pint bottles. There'd be like 20 or 30 of them. So I don't know if we can make sure that, you know, our fellow cleans those up or checks that area. He says he cleans them up most of the time, but I don't know if the officer needs to be checking that. It happens at night, he says. So, and it's, it's a lot of bottles. A lot of little pints.
Couldn't around my house, they don't see some bottles.
Oh, okay.
Not, not...
Sounds like somebody's hiding it from someone.
Not exactly. Instead, they wear a soda, the beer, the candy wrappers, McDonald's, Hardee's, Popeyes, anywhere they get ready, they spill it. It's about a bucket every day.
This is just straight out, and it's one, the same brand of vodka.
Yeah, this is...
I can't remember. It's got a red label.
And they bake it up, so they...
Okay.
But that's an ongoing problem in the whole city. They just like...
Yeah, I know it. All right. Do y'all have anything else from Ms. Courtney?
It's not CRA, but I did, I just wanted to do the windows indoors on that building, so they'll be starting that. And then I'm out of money, but I'm going to ask you guys for some more money because I would like to paint the outside of it.
Okay. I, I don't know, I'm, I'm real unsure about this, but maybe Mr. Pascalone, when he gets to a report that he's going to have, I'll ask if I can remember about work on that, that building there. That sounds good. All right. And then we'll move on to the city attorney's report, and we have Mr. Pascalone with us today.
The lady and Dan and I discussed, or I guess he briefed me on some questions people had regarding the potential historic district.
Yes.
So I called and spoke to the state at length several times. If you guys have specific questions you want to ask me, I'm happy to answer them, or she kind of went through the...
Can you stick it?
She went through the criteria for setting up the district, and I know at least one question was regarding notice. And how, how notice works on creating these historic districts is it's supposed to come from the nominating partner. So the individual from the community that makes the nomination is supposed to send out the letters, and then there's supposed to be a newspaper advertisement that's put in the local paper, and then a copy of that advertisement also added to a, to a letter sent out by the local partner. I, I pressed several times on regarding what the state historic agency does regarding notice, because that's not something I've ever heard of from any other agency or quasi-agency. And she was adamant that, that all of that is kind of pushed off. That how it's done is it's done at the, it's done with the local partner level. Some of them are individuals that nominate their own houses. Some of them are groups. There's a group out of South Florida that does this kind of all over the state as a Also showing for, I guess, notice for the city and the county, as we reached out, we spoke to the county. It doesn't look like, unless Mr. Schuler got noticed directly, that anybody on the county commission got noticed that this CRA district, or this historic district was proposed to be created. One of the factors that the state historic commission looks at when sending the nominations up or making our application is buy-in from the county and buy-in from the city if it's located within the city. Those are two of the determining factors. Also very unique in this is votes are done by the individual, not by the partner. So I know some concern was expressed, and we have several members in this proposed district that own more than one parcel of land. That individual gets one vote, no matter how many parcels they own. Now, if they own it with another person, if it's owned by corporation, if the ownership is split, then all of those different individuals would have a vote, but if it's owned by one person or one business, whether or not they own all of the historic district or they own one, one city lot in the historic district, it's a one-vote, it's a one-vote system. Another part of it that I found interesting was it's not a majority rule either. So one of the challenges that's, there's a court fight over, 89 people said no, that they want to be part of this subhistoric area down in the Boca area, Boca Grande area in Lee County. And that case, the state still set the nomination up. So you had the county said no, the city said no, the majority of the individuals that had a vote within the historic district said no, and the state said, we're still going to set the nomination up. I was unable to find kind of what the final resolution was. It's actually one of the only meetings that they have failed to publish in the last couple of years. So there's a transcript from it, but it's not very clear as to why the override vote got made, but it's, I know constituents have had questions. Even if everybody votes no, the state has still somehow attempted to advance that to the next level. There was a question regarding taxes. In that case, it's 20% of your qualifying spending on renovations that count, you can get a federal tax rebate on it. There's no automatic incentive for state. There's nothing for property taxes, county taxes, sales taxes, anything like that. There's nothing that qualifies under that, under this program. And then regarding enforcement, and this would be the other piece to kind of talk to the county and the city we need to vote on. Being on the registry doesn't automatically create enforcement. It requires an ordinance to be passed. So if the city commission so chose to pass an ordinance, kind of like they have an Apothecola that sets forth what the guidelines are, then there's some sort of enforcement or review mechanism that's created. But if the city doesn't pass an ordinance, creating this review board and these guidelines, there's nothing to enforce. There's no, there's no criteria that are set forth. And I think that's certainly something the CRA they want to discuss themselves. If they're going to say, we're going to support this nomination, a lot of the other areas do, you know, a letter of support for it, and then if the board says, we don't want to provide a letter of support, certainly do that, and that would be something for the, the greater Caravelle City Commission to decide whether or not they're going to put their support behind it or not. I didn't know the county commission meeting got canceled, but I'll reach back after them to see if they're going to be providing a letter of support, but they were pretty adamant. I discussed it with them, that they hadn't gotten notice of that past meeting and they hadn't gotten notice of the, of the next meeting. And I don't think anybody's been able to provide a newspaper advertisement showing where the meeting was properly noticed, and that is part of the criteria. So if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to. I've spent a lot of time on the phone with the state for the last...
So Ms. Tamara has a comment?
Well, I'm just a little confused. What you described sounds like what you do when you set up a, a local historic district with criteria for how the buildings have to be kept and, and the kinds of things that have to be done, and special permissions. That's not what this is. This is a, a national historic register nomination. It's not, it's creating a historical district, but not one. It's not, there's a difference between a national historical district and a local historical district. And the buy-in from the county and the notices and all that stuff are all part of what the process is for a local enforcement organization to have a district. So I mean, when you talk about notices and the things, and I, I just, did you, did you speak with someone in Ruben Acosta's office?
Extensively.
Okay, so...
Right, and she talked about layers of notice being provided, but essentially, she said, and again, this is what confused me, is it comes from the local, it puts the onus on the local partner to provide these notices. And it requires, you know, publication within the newspaper, and in the case, it's kind of ended up in a, a big fight. They provided six separate notices, and that was a big criteria that the state looked at it, is did those individuals within that district have, have noticed? And a lot of those people said, we never got the notice, and what they were able to show was two letters came from the nominating organization, one with a copy of the newspaper advertisement, two letters directly from the county saying, hey, this is what's being proposed within our county, which we don't have in this case either, and then two from the office of, state office of historic preservation, which when I spoke to them last week, they never sent anything out.
Because that's not what's happening. That's not the type of historical district that's being created, so I'm...
And maybe it's the nominating members, you know, in that case, the nominating member that we were looking at, that I was talking to her about, they went back and sought clarification and sent it out to everybody so that everybody's on, on notice. And I think that's all that, that's all people are wanting to make sure happen, is they, they have notice of the vote to make sure that it's done procedurally the right, the right way. The CRA can vote on it however they want to vote on it, the city can vote on it however they want to vote on it, and the county also. They're looking at what buy-in they're getting surrounding, in the surrounding area.
Well, it's just confusing to me because it's different than what Mr. Wafer and Mr. Acosta told you all when they were here.
And he, when he was here, he did speak about that everyone would have a vote, it would be 51, 51%.
Right.
Or one vote over the 50%. It's what Mr. Wauber said to us here.
And that's what Acosta said.
And he wasn't sure of the advertisement requirements, he said, that there was some type of...
I don't remember who he said would be responsible for sending notices, but he did say that all the property owners would be...
Their off, their office sent out, or none of you are not a property, you don't own your property.
Their office sent out notices because you received one.
You received one, and so did Harry's bar received one. So they did go out, but...
Again, the thing that she stressed with me, I wrote it three different times in my notes, was buy-in from the local partner, it was the local partner to send out, to send out proof of advertising in a publication of a local newspaper prior to the initial webinar that they discussed, kind of an informational setting, and then they sent out a second notice, and it was mailed with the publication prior, prior to the meeting. So I'd asked her just if she had copies of any of that, and she didn't. She had put it back on the local partner to, to provide a notice. When they submit these application packages, it's generally an exhibit to the application. It's a letter of support from the county, a letter of support from the city, notice to all the individuals, and then they list out all the people that have, all the property owners that have sent in their letters of support, anybody that sends in a letter of dissent, and then they go through the three, the three criteria and choose one out to make a nomination on the national.
So, and Commissioner Melander wants to speak, I'm assuming here, but I would just, I think, maybe, I'm just trying to clarify, maybe the letter of support is, is a vote. I guess that's the same thing as a vote. Maybe I, I wouldn't know, but maybe that's what it is. But I'll, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Melander if you, if you're ready, sir.
Ms. Tamara said it well. When she used the word confused, I think there's a lot of confusion. No, I'm confused. I am, I remember what Mr. Wauber told us at a meeting when he was here. I remember things that Ms. Tamara and I talked about and others. Read this document right here that was sent out to the public, or to the landowners side I see just one quick thing, and there's several things in here that I could point out, which is why I'm saying I'm confused, that I think others and property owners are going to be confused. In this document that I just referenced, there's nowhere in that document, it says that a non-response is a vote of positive support. Now, Mr. Wauber said that that is true, that a non-response from a property owner is a positive vote in favor of the district. Doesn't say that in this document anywhere I can find. Another example where you referenced that a property owner can get 20% tax reduction. I read that over and over. I'm not an attorney. It doesn't say you will, it says you may, and it doesn't say 20%, it says up to 20% after review by the federal and the state historical boards. There's a lot of confusion that I see in what's transpiring. So I'll stop with, with that. I see some other things, but I see a lot of confusion in what's transpiring, and I'm just afraid that the property owners or the people affected are confused and not well-informed, or not completely informed. Again, let's just hypothetically say that there's a property owner that doesn't support this, and they just say, I'm not going to do anything, I'm not going to send in a response. Well, according to Mr. Wauber, if they don't send in a response, that's a positive vote. But I don't think the landowner knows that, because I don't see it in that document anywhere.
That wasn't one of the things I specifically discussed with the state. I can go back to them and get clarification. I think, I think certainly from, from the local buy-in or the local sponsor, you know, certainly a letter explaining that to everybody so that all the information's given. I don't, I don't necessarily think that the, the city or the CRA itself can send out some sort of clarification letter, but there's certainly some clarif, it's, in all honesty, like I said, I've, I've never seen something where you ask for, you ask for votes and you don't vote by the parcel, you vote by the person. That doesn't, that, and any other vote, state government, local agency that I've ever worked with, I've never seen that that's the, that's the case when you're affecting people's property, property rights or, or registration rights or, or requirements. And I'm sorry if I wasn't clear, it is up to 20% off of your federal, the federal taxes if those purchases or improvements may qualify. It, it's up to 20%, but it's not, it's not a saving that, and that was one of the things that got sent to me was, I guess, a question regarding property taxes. Is this somehow a way, if you're in the historic district, to affect or modify your property taxes or your sales taxes or any other taxes at the local level, state or local level? The answer's no. It doesn't affect that in any way, in any way whatsoever.
Correct. And that's the way I read it, and that's the reason why I said there's a lot of confusion for me, and I'm not a property owner within the district. I'm a commissioner sitting on the council and on the CRA board, but I see a lot of confusion in the process. And you're right, Mr. Attorney, I don't, I wouldn't think it's the CRA or the city commission's responsibility to send out letters of clarification for this. We didn't initiate it to begin with. So it's not our responsibility to send out clarification. But if the process is going to go through, I feel like that it's fair to the public and to the property owners affected within this proposed district to be well-informed.
When, I, are you, can I speak for them?
Absolutely.
Okay. May I hold that just a minute then?
There's a lot of other things in there.
I know. But it talks about here, and, and I've read the one, this is, that the city received, and so I know, you know, what it says here. I just want to refer to it, and I'm only to express my concerns, because I am confused as well. And Mr. Pascalone may not have the answer today, but just to, just to say what I'm concerned about is that there's three basic purposes for listing a property in the national register, and, and that's on this letter that I guess was sent to, well, this one was sent to the Caravelle Community Redevelopment Agency. One and two, one and three don't worry me so much for, I'm concerned not only for the property owners, but also, I don't own property in the, in the district, but also for future funding possibilities for the city. So this one provides, it's number two, is to provide the property limited protection from any federally funded, comma, licensed, comma, or assisted projects that might adversely affect the historic property. So federally funded, and, and in, in this thing, it talks about if it's, if it's some of these things, these three basic purposes, I think I understand that it would be reviewed by the National Historic Register Review Board. And so if we were, for instance, our, our water plant, our old water plant, the money that we just used to put the roof on and that we're going to use to put the windows, that is federal money. That is direct federal money. And I'm worried that we won't be able to use any kind of monies like that, and if any of the CDVG monies come from the federal government to the state that are dogged out, will we be able to use these federal monies on, where we have in the past used grants? And that's all we have, because we are second to Dog Island District. We are the poorest district in Franklin County. I mean, Caravelle is, the agency. And that's how we get our money to, to do our repairs throughout the city and in the CRA district and in, and in this proposed little core historic district. So that, that bothers me.
And if I might add to that subject, and I don't want to interrupt you because you may have one.
I'm finished now.
And if I read this document right, and I read it several times, even, that's going to pertain to a private landowner, if they apply for grants and so forth and so on, that federal review committee and the state review committee's going to look at it. They're going to review it before, before local planning and zoning's going to look at anything.
And, and I understand the attraction of having a, a national historic places on the national register, you know, it's, could be a good thing, but I just want to...
Absolutely.
...make sure that for a small rural town that's not a wealthy town, and we're doing the best we can to get by, then, you know, we can't receive federal funding, any kind of grant monies unless it goes on review. And, you know, I, I even thought, well, now, we're using American Rescue Plan, federal money to put, to assist with the elevator on the back of, of the lift on the backside of the Justice Building. What if this was already in place and it had to be reviewed by the national register? What if they said, no, that's not historically suitable to go on that building, so we wouldn't be able to assist with that funding? And that, that concerns me.
I had something to what you're saying. Something I thought about that has to do with your concerns is if it does have to go in front of a review board, we already are short with our time spans to get things done, a lot of time. How long is that going to take? And then will we lose the grant money that we're trying to apply to? That was a concern of mine, just the timeframe of... was a concern of mine, just the timeframe of those reviews and, because everything takes forever when it goes to the upper government.
Well, and, and to add to that, you're right, I agree with you. And if I read that right, there are two review boards. It'll be a state and a federal review board. And there again, to add something else to the mix, if it happens, if this were to pass and this group or a group came to the City Commission and requested, like Appalachia Cola, to create their own local review board, then you're looking at another layer, if that were to happen. I'm just hypothetically ifs, but definitely you would have a federal and a state review board if I read that right. Anyway, that's me.
All I can say is, most people want less government in their business, not more. This looks like we're adding more to, I'm not a property owner in this district, but I got the letter. I don't want no more government control over my property. We got enough. So, I don't see where that's going to fly with the, just people, landowners, owns that property, they don't want more government in, in their businesses, homes, whatever. Just, that's my opinion.
Well, I don't own property in the district.
Yeah, I don't really.
And, I mean, if it, if there was, if there was a vote or is a vote, or some people say there's not a vote, some people say there is, we don't even know for sure, whatever the property owners in that district, that's fine with me, whatever they want.
Oh, yeah.
But my main concern is funding going forward for projects in, in the, in the area. That's, that's.
Well, CRA does have property in the district.
And, and the city does too.
And I'd like to add the same thing as the mayor did. I'm not trying to get into the property owners' business and manage their property. However, I'll go back to my original comments when I started talking, is, from what I see, I'm really concerned about the confusion and the lack of clarity. I feel like there's some things here that the people just are not well-informed of, and it is not clear as to exactly the way things are. Because I'm hearing, I'm hearing things out on the street that is different than what's in that document, very much so. And people are confused. There again, those people that receive this document, whether it confuses them or whether it does not, and they say, "Well, I'm not interested in this, I'm going to throw this in File 13." Well, that just made a positive vote, and when it happens, these folks going to be upset. Anyway, I wish.
I've talked to several property owners, and I've never heard one of them have a good understanding of this. They're very confused about all of it, the whole process, what it does, everything. They don't understand it. I mean, I've been researching it for years, and I'm still trying to figure it out.
I, but I don't know, as Mr. Pascalone said, it seems like that it's still, whether the property owners are, are in agreement or not, it's still going to get submitted. Is that correct, Ms. Tamara?
I, I don't, that, I was not aware of that. I thought if a certain percentage, that there was a number, if a certain, I don't know, whether it was 50 plus one or something like that, voted, voted against, that it wouldn't go in further. That's what I understood.
This is the email from Mr. Walker, not in his letter, but his email to us when we were asked how many have to vote in. If 50% plus one of the total number of private property owners object to the listing, then the nomination itself would be considered defeated and will instead, will more, will likely move forward as a determination of eligibility.
Will likely move forward?
Will likely move forward. Even if it's defeated, it will likely move forward as a determination of eligibility.
Of eligibility, not created as a district, but eligible.
Which entails going through the nomination process, including formal submission before the National Register Review Board and the MPS, except if it is not considered listed in the NR, in, in the National Register until enough of the private property owners lift their objections, that there is no longer a majority of objections. I will put it, I will put it on the screen.
You're good, you're good, girl.
No, I'm a slow guy. I need to read that by myself.
Okay, I have a question. I know you were saying that it's up to the local person who started this to submit these things to the state. Is that what you were saying?
That's what Ms. Lucas advised me.
That's what I'm supposed to say.
Who is that person?
Tamara, Ms. Lake.
Okay.
So, I'm listed as the person?
That, that's, you're the name that she gave me.
Okay, that's good.
So, we can also, I've requested a copy of the full application package, which is everybody's right underneath the process, because I was, I was looking for these things. I, you know, it.
I have all that I could give you.
It's like building blocks of a lawsuit or a case, you definitely notice opportunity to get her, all of those things. So, she didn't, hasn't provided those as of yet. I'll go back to her and ask her that. Again, we can certainly make a 119 request from her if we have to, just so the full board can see that the entire application.
No, they gave out copies of the full package when they were here at the meeting at the library, and I have, I brought, did I not bring them to the next meeting?
Well, and that was my question too, that I had with her.
I, I had them.
Regarding the meeting at the library, was that, I can't find a publication for that. I couldn't find that on the city's website, the county's website, the city's Facebook page, I called the local newspaper. I don't see anywhere where that informational meeting that was held at the library, how that got asked to public. It didn't get sent to the individual landowners like the state letter did, and there was just nothing I could find that the people within the district or the people within the city or the people within the area were, were advised that this meeting was taking place.
And there, there were notices published in local, it wasn't in the paper, but there were, there were notices put at the library. All we were asked to do was to procure a location. The meeting was conducted and called and everything by Mr. Walker at the state.
Okay.
And so, I can give you a copy of the, the notice that we put at the library. We put it at all the places that we normally put stuff, but it was.
The local businesses had flyers that Ms. Tamara brought around.
I gave, I gave a copy of the flyer to, but the flyer said.
Wrong day. Oh, yeah, the wrong day.
Did we have, we had a second one, didn't we?
Yeah, I remember the first one had the wrong date on it, and you come to the meeting and announced it, and it was the wrong day.
It was the wrong day.
Yeah.
I still have it in my file right there.
Because I remember we made, we did make a post, we shared a post that maybe you had put out.
Probably put out by the meeting.
Because it, like.
It was published.
Like the day before.
It was published the 22nd, and the meeting was actually on the 23rd. I have it in the briefcase.
I thought we, when we found out earlier that we, at the meeting, for you all, I thought we went, as I recall, we went and redid.
We corrected it.
And corrected it and put it up and put it back out, but I can't, I can't swear to that off the top of my head. I just don't carry all this in my brain.
I think you were trying to dip that email.
Yeah, keep it discreet.
Well, that's, that's all right. And did you have any further questions at this time, at this, okay. Yes, Mr. Greg?
I, I've read that letter a couple of times. I think what, what that statement was there was that it doesn't really matter whether it's voted in or not, it's still going to go before the review board, and then it will be eligible. It would not become a historic district, but it would be eligible until enough property owners would remove their objection, and it would lower it below 50%. Then it could be designated. That's the way I understand it, but I'm not an attorney.
That's the way I understand it too.
Now, and, and at our last commission meeting, was it not requested or stated that the City Commission or the CRA Board needs to respond one way or the other?
We discussed that.
If we do not respond, according to Mr. Walker, that's a vote of support, but it doesn't say that in this document.
Does it give a timeframe of when we would respond?
Yes.
What was it?
Oh, this is second.
And I think it has to be notarized.
It does.
Okay, the response has, response has to be notarized.
And, and certified, right?
And certified.
But people aren't going to.
I thought it could be notarized or certified.
Certified mail.
That's, so when I spoke to the state, and again, this is something that would be nice for the people who are going to vote either way, you know, she just said it needed to have the I swear in repentiability of perjury, the foregoing facts and information, but the partial ID, she didn't say that it had to be notarized or sent via certified mail. She, she required, it's like a giraffe for a notary.
No, the, the no votes did. If it was yes, it didn't have to go through all that, but the no votes, the way I understood it, the no votes had to be certified mail.
Is that, I agree with Keisha. That to me seems.
Because that stuck out to me.
Is where I'm more confused, because in this document, it says just what she just said, and I didn't take it to determine whether it was a yea vote or a nay vote.
I thought you only had to vote because it was a nay vote.
I'm really sorry, because I wasn't here, I don't know how all this happened, but how did this happen? Did, I mean, did, like, the community get together on this and say, "We want to have a historic district?" Because.
I, I can give you the extended historical deal, but basically in 2009, there was a review of the city's historical properties, of both the physical properties and the important things historically in the community. And one of the recommendations was that they create, actually, several historical districts. And in that, it was a grant from the state we got, we hired a consultant, and they recommended an entire list of activities, but they also registered a lot of our current buildings in the master site file for the, for the state, which is a very good thing. And one of the things they recommended was that we have a, not a local historical district, but a national historical register indication. Those things are quite different.
I guess my question is, how did this all get on the radar to begin with? I mean, they, who's they? And did they just show up and say, "I want to, this is a great area, let's turn it into the national registry"? I mean, how did that all?
Well, you.
I'm sorry, I'm, I don't, I'm.
That's all right.
That's all right.
It's fine.
We've all been there.
Because that, it feels like a hijacking, is what it feels like. It feels like being hijacked. It's, like, and because one or three people called in somebody to, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, don't be.
I'm really sorry. I just feel really offended right now, like.
Don't say it. That's all right, and ask questions. Please, you know, if you're ready, ask questions, but I, I'm understanding that once that it's, Mr. Walker told me, it's a proposed core district that is being submitted by some partners, and you're one of them, to the, to the, to the state, to be then pushed on to the National Park System to be on the National Register of Historic Places.
Right.
And once that it's accepted on the National Register, then it is no longer a proposed national historic district, it is a historic district. That word proposed falls off and it becomes a historic district.
If, if, yes, if it gets accepted. I mean, if the property owners, 50, I keep calling that 51%, but half and one, whatever that is.
It sounds like though, from what everyone's talking about here, that it will just sort of underhandedly make its way to a, on a national registry without any freaking person really understanding or knowing. It's sneaky. It's underhanded, and I'm really, I'm so upset I want to cry. I'm sorry. I'm, that's, so, me, I was a business owner right downtown just about two, three months ago, and I'm just now hearing about this. Because that would have been, that would have affected me as well, right?
Yes, ma'am, I believe. It just depends exactly where your business was, but.
This is the area.
There is a district.
Inside the rainwater.
It's not, it's not every single property within that bear fund.
So, that's, that would have affected your previous property, because that's, my northern is the first.
Well, that's good, but what about all those people? Does every single person that owned a parcel, have they been, like, talked to? This is just really, I don't, I don't.
A great number of them have been talked to. A great number of them have changed hands over, over the years. And there is still confusion about it. It's not, people think that it all happened when another organization got created, but it was, it was, been, we've been developing the district for years. I mean, since the, the Caravelle Historical Society, who hangs out at, at the History Museum. We've been working on this project as part of the Caravelle Waterfront Partnership for, since 2007. And we got the grant, the grant identified all the historical possible activities in the community, and then the Waterfront Partnership, it was very active for the first 10 years, so up to, what would that make it, up to 2017. We had been working, making progress on getting all the businesses and people informed, but then a lot of stuff happened after 2017. And.
This grant that you got, what was that for?
It was a grant to the State Historical Preservation Agency to, again, to hire a consultant to review the town and identify all the properties that were over 50 years old, the, the buildings that were over 50 years old, the historic places and the historic locations. And there's a copy of that document on the city's website.
How much, if you don't mind asking, I'm just curious, how much was the grant?
Well, it was probably $50,000.
All right, so you get the grant money to hire people to come in and identify buildings 50-plus years old. That's what that money was for?
That was just one of a number of things it recommended. It gave us, they went, they identified them, they wrote them up and registered them with the, the Master Site File of the state of Florida, which is a statewide registry of historic properties. They, I really, I don't, the book is like this thick, and there are a lot of.
The group in the, in, in your, I guess it's the Historic or Museum, the, how many are there in your group?
At the time we were doing all that work, there were about 20 people that were involved with the Waterfront Partnership, and there were probably five of us.
And you were all, were all 20 people, like, property owners there on the waterfront?
No, no. I mean, I have no property on that waterfront.
Why would 20 people that don't own property on the waterfront get a grant and change the life of everybody else on the waterfront and feel like that's okay?
Because the, the mayor and the city manager at the time thought it was a really good idea, and asked an organization to write the grant, and, and it was done because they asked for it to be done.
Well, then my next question would be, how the heck do you get out of this mess?
I'm, I'm not sure, honestly. I am not sure. I don't, you know, I, like I say, I'm, I'm not sure, honestly. I am not sure. I don't, you know, like I say, if, if the property owners want to move forward with it, then, you know, the only say that I would have would be representing the CRA District Property, which is the water plant, and then the commission on the commission side. But I do want to just draw your attention here to what Mr. Courtney, let me see if you topped the, there you go. Mr. Waller told me that, personally on the phone, where it says there, the title, proposed downtown Caravel, National Register HD means historic district. And so that's all of that that's proposed in that, in those red lines there. So I can only, as a novice, not understanding this completely, only assume that that's going to take in all the properties, not just the buildings, because it says district, district. So if, if it moves forward, like we just discussed, and it makes a, the National Register Review Board approves it, then that word proposed falls away and it becomes, is called on the National Register, downtown Caravel National Register Historic District. And it would be a historic place on the National Register.
Well, that sounds all good and fine, but I actually lived in a historic district in Atlanta. Let me tell you something, everybody, it is a royal painting, yes. You have to have like particular colors, particular styles, particular roofs.
I think they haven't gotten that far yet.
Oh, my gosh.
It's not that just yet.
It's not that type of district.
I have a question.
Okay.
Was it more like the Baptist church or the Burdas, or none of that was included? Because that's like two of the oldest buildings. I know that Baptist church is one of them.
I thought the Burdas was.
It's not in the red line. I didn't just, I wondered how they, I know it's in that, I've seen that study.
I think Burdas is there. It's right there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I know that.
So I don't know, I'm thinking we need to move forward here, because we've been on this about maybe fifty minutes or forty-five, and Mrs. Sabrina has-
Should we, because the, we need to make a response by August 2nd, and we don't have a meeting before then, so should we vote whether or not we would like to send a yes or a no response?
I believe that all of that is the pleasure of the board if you want to vote in the first place. I believe that up to the board. And then we would have a vote, if we want to vote, if we don't want to vote.
Because if we don't answer this saying yes, some of us may not feel like sending this.
And you say-
So I think we do need to-
Hold on just a minute. Yes, you are allowed to make a motion, and you would like, you think we need to vote?
I feel like we do need to vote, because this is the only chance that we're going to have before deadlines.
And Miss, Miss Sabrina, what, do you think we need to vote?
I do.
Okay, and you, Mr. Mallander?
I'm listening.
Okay.
No, really, to answer your question, I'm indecisive. I'm trying to lighten the mood a little bit. I think it's our duty to.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And because it's, we've already been approached at the commission level, and I understood it then that we would, that we needed to either vote yay or nay. And again, from what, what Waller, Weber says, a no response is a yay vote, which I don't agree with, because the public is not being, or the landowners are not being informed of that. And I'm going to quit analogizing this thing. It's kind of like you're wanting to sell a white Chevrolet truck, but in essence, when you get to the, down there to sign the paperwork on it, it's a green Dodge. You're, you're not informed, you're not properly informed. Anyway, and I'll quit going with that. Yes, I think it's our duty to.
Okay, and Mr. Commissioner Bill Gray? Okay, and then I'm thinking somebody wants to make a motion.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to get a copy of this letter and have it hand delivered to every property owner within the district.
Okay, so we have that motion. We have to entertain the motion to get a copy of the letter. And, and make sure that it's, say that again?
That it's either hand delivered, because I can't guarantee the folks to offer it sadly, but they should be hand delivered. This is a big deal.
To all property owners? Okay, so we, we have to entertain the motion by Ms. Kelly Brown. That, that the CRA, it gets copies of the letters or hand delivered to all property owners. And we have that motion by Ms. Kelly Brown. And do we have a second?
One question.
Okay, well, we need to have a second.
I can't ask that question yet.
Sorry.
I'll second, so we can discuss for discussion.
Who's going to hand deliver these letters? You?
I'll do it.
And then that even is all up to us to do, because we're not, I don't know if that would be correct.
I don't know.
I was going to say, I'd like to speak to, to her motion. And, and not be improved by any way.
Yes, we're having-
I feel like that we, we as this governmental entity representing Caravel, we didn't initiate this movement, and we don't need to get involved in that way by trying to make this movement go along. And I keep referring to this document that you want to hand deliver. It's not totally accurate. I pointed that, I've been trying to point that out during this whole meeting. That thing is not giving them all the information.
That people wouldn't understand and they would not vote, no?
That's not giving them all the information that the public needs to, or that the landowners need to know.
I got you.
So.
I understand.
I'm not against you by any means, and I think your purpose is real good.
I know, I understand.
But as the local government, I wouldn't want us to get involved in something that's been initiated by people in the community. Because it has not become a gov, city governmental process yet. Does that make sense?
It does. And I, I'm afraid that it would make these board members responsible, more responsible.
They'll think we're doing it.
Yes.
I understand, in fact, they're already going to want to enter.
There, there are in fact six, I think, I don't have all that with me. There are in fact, I think, six or eight property owners that don't even live anywhere near here. They live in Miami, and they live in US and Atlanta, and somebody lives out west.
Did they agree with all this? I'm just curious.
I have no idea.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask Ms. Tamra a question. Can I put you on the spot?
Sure.
Okay. And you know, you know I love you, and I'm not putting you on the spot.
And you know, this is not Tamra's project.
I know, but, but my question is open-ended.
Okay.
And you don't have to respond. And my question is, is there any way to slow this thing down and get it right?
I, I was actually having a similar thought.
I'll leave it at that.
So are we ready, are we, do we want to vote on this motion then? We do, do need to vote on it, the motion and the second, although, you know, we've discussed, maybe-
Correct.
We're not, I don't want to put words in people's mouths, so. So we have the motion to, by Ms. Brown, and you can certainly make another motion, but we vote on this one. Let us, let us vote to send a copy, a copy, hand deliver a copy of this letter to all the property owners. We have that motion, and we're, any other discussion on that motion? Okay, those in favor? Those who oppose? Aye. Okay, so is that unanimous? Is there any, okay, so that's unanimous. All right, do we want to entertain another motion? Regarding, I guess, would be regarding sending a letter and support or opposition?
I'm going to make a motion that we, that we send a letter of opposition to this proposal, as it stands. Now, does that need to go?
That's good. Letter of opposition to send to the state by Commissioner Mallender. Okay, and we have that second by Commissioner Brown. Okay, now is there any, any discussion? Is there any discussion? Church is trying to think.
So.
Yes, please.
If in the future we revisit this and it's explained better so that everybody understands and we feel comfortable with it, we can always change our letter to support in the future. But for now, with this timeline, we need to respond in some way.
I want to, I want to make sure that all the property owners have a full understanding.
Exactly.
And that they have a, an opportunity to send a letter of support or opposition, whatever they prefer, is there right?
Well, that's, that's where I was going with the question, is there any way to slow the thing down and get it right? And I can think of several ways to get it right. And I'm not going to sit here and try to say those, but anyway.
I can reach back out to the state and ask if there's any way to push the vote. They only meet every, I think, two or three months, the state's committee does. So I think they're trying to get this on news in November, which is the next, the next big meeting that they have. I can reach out to them and see if there's-
It's coming up quicker than that.
It's August the 2nd, or 3rd?
I think it's the 3rd of August.
August the 3rd.
So if you could get it.
And it, but that may, that, that request may have to come from the applicant. It may not be able to be from the city or any of the, the city. It may have to come from, and I'll, I'll call her.
Okay.
I'll be back and ask her.
I've not been, I've not been made aware that I was considered the applicant. And it isn't me personally, it's the historic, it's the, it's the evolution.
She didn't use the term applicant, she used that you were the local partner, and it was the local partner that was responsible for sending the notices. So she didn't say the Historic Society, the Historic Preservation.
Yeah.
That's the only reason that I knew it was, that I knew it was you, that that's, that's how she, that's the term, term of honor that she uses.
Okay, well, that's, I am, I am a local partner in trying to get it done, for sure. But I was not, nobody told me that one of the jobs of that responsibility was to hand out notices to all of the property owners. Because at that point in time, I didn't have a list until they had the meeting of the, of the, until they gave me the district list. I did not have a list of the property owners until they gave me one. And then I went and we looked it up at the property place.
Okay, Ms. Sabrina has a question. Commissioner Brown?
We, as, the commission will not have a chance to vote before August 2nd. Is there any way?
That's the reason why I made it in the name.
Well, that, that this, I believe, would be for the CRA board. I don't know what else we could do but call a short meeting of the commission. If we wanted to do that, to have a short meeting of the commission sometime really quick, like. But I don't think the CRA board can call a, a short meeting of the commission.
But didn't you say that in the meeting, at the meeting the other night, when you talked about this issue?
We talked, no, we did not vote to have a, a commission meeting.
We did not ever stated that we would address it in the CRA meeting.
So, I, Mr. Pascalone, okay, let's go ahead now. We have, first of all, let's, let's take care of the motion on the table. And this motion is from the CRA board regarding to send a letter of opposition to the state, and that's seconded by Commissioner Brown. And is there any other discussion at this point? Okay, those in favor to send a letter of opposition?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so that carries unanimously, Ms. Keisha. Okay, what we want to do is see how the CRA board could address this at this point. Is there any way, is that, is that correct?
Or-
Or do we want to, I mean, the commission-
Somehow, how can the commission vote on this before it's too late?
Yes.
I think the only way would be to call a special meeting. Any other official way to commission to dictate what action they want to take.
Okay, and can the commission call a special meeting during the CRA meeting?
No, the commission separately and apart from that.
You can call a meeting after the state's ever, you call a special meeting, that's the mayor, and I'll see about it.
Okay, and have like the-
I think we have to have thirty-six hours on there just.
Okay, all right.
Usually forty-eight.
So y'all, it's not me and Courtney. Let Courtney know when y'all want to, to meet about that, and she'll, she'll, she'll organize that, and then I'll ask for a special meeting if that's what y'all would like for me to do.
I, I think I need to.
All right, okay. Everybody happy for now, satisfied?
I have another item if you don't have a chance to.
All right, wonderful. So we'll take care of two items on a special meeting.
Just hold, Commissioner.
Can we do that?
No, I'm kidding.
I don't, I don't like to do that. Every now and then it has to happen, emergency, but I don't care for it.
Yeah, we have enough time to do it.
Okay. There we go.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Pascalone, and that was a, a good discussion.
Ms. Tamra?
I will, and, and I will go to the office tomorrow, and I will engage, since I'm the community partner, I'll call Mr. Acosta, who's the boss of those people, and I will ask him if we can slow it down. Because I know, well, I just think you're right, I think. I think there's more confusion than, than there should be.
And, and Mr. Pascalone, I think you said you were going to contact that office as well to see if there's a way to, the state can slow down the vote?
I just wanted to see who needs to come, and it may need to come from the applicant, and it has to be the applicant.
And when you, your discovery, if you would just send a memo to Courtney, and then she, she can circulate that. Is that all right, Courtney? Okay, all right then, we'll move on to the next item, which is new business, of which we have none. And old business, we have none. And then we have our Anovia Group Consulting Projects, which I think, Courtney? Okay, very good.
Our Rain Street Revitalization Project. We're just waiting on the notice of award from the state. Everything's been submitted, and they just need to review it and let us know that we can give a notice of award. The Military Service Flag Pole, Russell just said that they were still working on that project, but I did email him and ask him to find out why, having been here in three weeks. So he hasn't gotten back with me yet, but we'll find out what the holdup is.
And I do have a quick one on that one. When we were there for the groundbreaking, Mr. Rickards, Rickards? Across the street stopped me on the way to the car, and I forgot to mention in our last meeting, and, you know, I never really thought about this, he's very concerned about all the racket that the brackets are going to make on the poles, you know, and seven flag poles, and I honestly, and I assured him, and I hope it's all right, that I assured him, that we would figure a way or get some plastic or noise that don't make some kind of brackets. And Courtney's looked, and Greg has looked, and they do make some things. And, yeah, and the, that will not make noise on the flag poles. And probably the people with the condos would probably be a little bit irritated. So I just wanted to mention that. Yeah, twenty-four seven.
With a clock, don't talk that.
Okay, all right, that's all right. That's it. Thank you. And was there anything else for the flag poles? Okay, and then we'll just move to the CRA board projects, which we have the expense to budget. We did receive our year-to-date, and, and I did a little expense to budget for myself. Didn't send it in to staff this time, but it's pretty much, and I'll just go over it real quick so we get an idea of, you know, our accounting and audit is paid in full. Our small equipment, we're up to thirty-one thousand four hundred ninety-eight, but that was to, to get a new employee set up. And the consulting, that's, that's been changed now to more in line, six thousand three hundred and eight, you know, she had put the wrong amount there. So, let's see. Palm trees, we're going to get palm trees trimmed, that will be done under the street signs. And we have a twenty-five thousand budget, we've only used nine hundred forty, nine hundred fifty dollars, so there'll be plenty there for that. Our military flag pole, we're hoping that he can get that done, but- Our military flag pole, we're hoping that he can get that done, but that, if he doesn't, then that would be something that we're going to have to move to the three-year commitment.
Yeah, I did talk to him when he came in here a couple of weeks ago. He said once he, and once everything got started, it would get.
Okay. And the facade grants, we, you know, we have still two outstanding, as Ms. Courtney reported on, but two have been. And then the Mariners Memorial, I had that marked. I don't know, like you say, what's happening with it. We can, this is something we can discuss for our budget for next year. Do we want to continue with that? Maybe put it on a three-year budget commitment or, you know, that's just, you know, we can think about that. So, but we have funding. The best I can tell, we've got right now remaining in the CRA $330,291. And we're, you know, we've got just two and a half months left in the budget year, so. But we've got, like you say, the military flag pole and facade grants still to pay out. And we may have to put some items to a three-year budget commitment. All right, and there was a little payment on the CDVG Marine Street, $785. So, are there any questions?
Didn't you say you needed to ask us for money for painting? Is that the CRA or?
It could be the CRA. We funded even all of the American Rescue Plan last time. We haven't funded anything other than the CRA, but it could be, because it is CRA property.
And what's that for now?
The painting of the old water point.
Oh, yeah.
Do we know how much it will be?
I'm estimating about $15,000. And that's just going off if we get a facade grant for this. I mean, is there?
So long.
Online, and she was about $9,000, so.
Do you want to bring it up at the next?
No, you don't have much time.
Six weeks.
Well, I want you to get the windows indoors here first, I think. Maybe not, I don't know.
Yes.
You could use that out of, there's a little bit left in maintenance. It's $3,780 in maintenance. And then there's, there's money in the street sign lot cleanup that could be used as well. It can be reallocated.
We can bring it back if we don't have to do it today, but.
Yeah, I don't think we'd be able to find somebody, get it ironed out, get it done, get it paid out before the end of the budget year.
Oh, okay.
And there's money in the facade grant this year, but it will be carried forward.
It's taking us one, six weeks just to get the quotes for the windows and doors.
So that can be a project if you want to do that. Okay, is there anything else? All right, then, let's see. Did I, no, I didn't. I thought I lost my last page. Okay, so item number two under the CRA board items is, item two, discussion of possible action regarding the 2023 Florida Redevelopment Association Annual Conference. So I guess we want to discuss whether or not members want to attend the annual conference this year. When is that?
Up till the 25th, 26th and 27th. Panta, Branda, Florida.
Panta, Medra.
Medra, Jack.
It's just south of Jack's Beach.
I would like to go. I learned so much about last month. I need so much.
And some of that would have to be out of this budget. Yes, that's right, as much as possible. Right, we have to pay for the most relevant thing. I think what happened, for last year, what happened was some money, it didn't all get paid. And training was, had to be, and some training and travel somehow it got split up. $2,411 for each budget item. I don't know what that was.
Go ahead now and do the registration and your hotel rooms so that comes out of this year's budget. But any of the fireworks fits because it's not tomorrow.
Three minutes.
That comes out of the next year's budget.
Okay. Well, I mean, how many people would like to go?
Yeah, one, so four.
Okay, okay.
I need to learn a bunch.
So we have two.
I really want to, but I just don't know if I can take the time off work this year.
I, I'm trying to see, you know, was it the 25th, 26th and 27th? I mean, the 27th is a half day?
I don't have a schedule out yet.
Uh-huh, an informational break.
Right.
And I'm, I'm just trying to remember.
And that was today.
I was just trying to see.
The night before we have the dinner, so you've got to stay for that. And then.
That's the 25th through 27th. And every year it's just the 24th through the 27th.
That's for the hotel registrat, hotel, because you get the day before.
The day before.
I know you ladies that went last year, y'all brought back some good information that we'd have never known, probably.
You get a lot of good information. Meet a lot of people that give you their, you know, recommendations and get ideas for projects. It's great, I love it.
And things change. I mean, because legislative changes, you know, happen every year and they.
We found some major stuff the last time.
And I would like to go. I'm a CRA queen. I used to be, I don't know what I am anymore. But yes, I really love CRAs.
I'd like to go as well. Now, for those of y'all that don't want to go, there is a basic CRA board training class. It's going to be in Fort Walton Beach, August the 11th. It's just a one-day class and that'd be a little closer if you didn't want to go to the whole conference and just wanted to do the basic training.
And I'm telling you, what, that basic training is good. I think, now you've taken it twice, haven't you, at the, at the conference, twice?
Yep.
And I went and did the whole CRA school or something thing, didn't I?
And so.
That was the thought, sure. I've done a lot of them.
I, I went three times to a CRA basic course before I even brought it to the city. I took myself to these basic courses. And then I've been to two through these conferences and they are very helpful.
So they will offer it at the conference, so anyone that goes to the conference will get this class. But anyone that doesn't want to go to the conference and just wants to do them one day, that would be closer.
And I'm telling you, you, it just.
I can't do that.
Lays it right out there. You have no question about how. And actually, did you go? I know Miranda went, her and I went.
I had, I've never been to any CRA training. It usually conflicts with Clark and Blood trying to sew up. I remember being a little bit.
And Carol Westmoreland was the one that Miranda and I went to. And she kept, Miranda had all kinds of questions for Ms. Carol afterwards and, and learned a lot on how salaries operate with CRAs and that type of thing. So it was, it was very good.
Is it non-refundable?
It seems like the motel was, but that was the particular night.
Nine days. But then you're already with your.
But that, this motel might be different, but it's.
No, there's not, there's not money, but there's, there's, we have $66,000 that was unanticipated because of higher property values than we anticipated. So, you know, there's, there's funding. It just wasn't a budget line item. And maybe we'll put this as a budget line item at the, at the next budget, our budget workshop, if you want to. And when is this CRA basics in Fort Walton?
That is on August 11th. And it's from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Since they may be going to stay tonight and be over there for that.
Okay. All right, all right, so we're discussing the, attending the annual conference. It looks like a one, two, three, four, five. Mr. Gray, would you like to go?
To the August 25th, 27th?
Yes, sir. No, October.
Yeah, October, I'm saying about the August 11th.
Okay, and that would be great.
That would be better.
August the 11th is, that, that course is top-notch, right there. So.
They will explain to you what CRA monies can be used for, what they can be used for. It's a really good class.
It's fast and good. You get the, you get the big picture. So.
I think I'm going to sit this one out.
Do you want to go to, well, you can go to Fort Walton.
I can't go.
Oh, shoot. All right, well, let's, we could have a motion for four or five in the event that something happens that Commissioner Brown can attend and she can check her schedule or check their schedule and see how it's working. Do they have one day? Can you go for one day?
I don't think so. I think it's the whole time. I don't have my login on this computer, I decided to leave home.
I did notice that some of them, well, you know, you'd see some people there for a day and then you wouldn't see them anymore.
They were vacationing at the full.
Oh.
Most of the time you register for the full conference or one day. Everyone I've ever attended, you can, you can pick.
Because there may just be certain courses you want to take.
Yeah.
All right.
I'll check them out too.
So I'll go ahead and motion for the, to have some attendees, four to five attendees at the annual conference in October.
I'll second that.
Okay. All right, and is there any further discussion? Okay, if anything changes, we'll bring it up at the, at the next meeting. And so those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, and that motion carries.
Do we need to have one for, they'll go to the Fort Walton Beach one?
I don't think so.
Oh, I don't think so.
If he wants to go, he's, he's let us know he wants to go and that's good. You're welcome to go. And then, okay, so other items brought forward by the CRA board? Any other items that you all want to discuss at this time? We'll say our next meeting is August the 15th, the budget workshop at 10:00 p.m. Anything else? All right, then, we're adjourned and thank you for that good discussion earlier.